To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sometimes.
Oh, your battery's going down.
Yeah. What is it take?
Double A.
No liquor, but we have fireworks.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So when we done?
Um, we have fireworks for Robert Beebe. Katie, Adam, Chair. The seventeenth of August, or the eighteenth of August.
Are the nine and three straight, sorry?
Liquor license?
Yeah. Lonnie?
Yes.
Are the nine and the three straight?
Yep, you're good.
Only a surveyor, he has crosshairs in his glasses.
Right.
I move to make a motion to approve the agenda, the minutes. There is one firework permit uh by Robert Beebe on August seventeenth and eighteenth, and no liquor license.
I will second that motion.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda and minutes. Does anyone have any questions, concerns about the agenda? additions, corrections? I read the minutes. I find nothing wrong, couldn't find anything spelling wrong, so. We also have a firework permit for Robert Beebe on the eight, seventeen to eighteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ooh. Motion carries. Well, I had rather an interesting week last week. They didn't make it on the same day, which helped out a lot. And a mental, state mental health meeting on uh kind of on the reorganization of the districts, communities, what do you recall? Lot of discussion on how they was gonna take care of people. The distance people might have to travel. Will there be beds available, all sorts of things for mental health. The biggest problem I have in southwest Iowa here. I'll hold this map up. We have a copy of it, but we are in the blue, ladies and gentlemen, the show can clear down here and uh I'll start with Clark, I think that's Clark. Goes clear up to over than sixty miles of the Minnesota border. I said, ladies and gentlemen, it's a hundred and twenty mile stretch from top to bottom. I said, if you put the the state facility, I call it state facility, in the middle, which is probably Pot County, I said, we're looking at sixty-five miles, one way for people to come and see an appointment. No, 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 they can cross over into other regions and get service. I said, why then did we have to travel? Well, popul- I says, population's got nothing to do with it then. And uh, Ms. Garcia says, well, that's, that's true in a sense. But she says, we had to make you guys look equal. My next comment didn't go well, because I said, well, southwest Iowa's been kind of shunned on for years and looks like we're getting shunned on again.
And it's wrong with this one right there.
I won't go there.
Well, but it's closed.
Why do we constantly duplicate public funds?
Yeah. Anyway, there wasn't, you know, my comments and questions went kind of by the side and so.
Okay, so let me back up. So we can cross that and still go to Pot County?
Well, you could leave people down in here. They can go up here and hear the area three.
Oh.
They could go into area three, or this is area.
So in other words, that really doesn't mean cross.
Doesn't mean the same, other than this is the area you gotta have the population in order to get state control or state help.
Jesus.
Yeah, I just, kind of irritating.
Is that set in stone?
Uh, mental health is pretty well done, and this, this will be basically, in a sense, what we will follow in public health. Matt was there in the public health meeting with me.
August first, that map has to be, please, finalized and really so on this first, so I mean, that's the final map.
Yeah.
And Richard's right in what he's saying, it's a funding map.
Yeah.
It's not a surveying issue, so the money will go to some central hub in that area. Get this first out, service wise. Residents will be able to go anywhere across the state they want and get the same level of service as what they're anxious.
And Matt and I attended public health board meeting, and a lot of that was brought up, and the biggest thing was not to have redundancy, not, once they start taking over and establishing public health district and stuff, they would just assume click the lever one day, and next day you're all under mental health. Well, that, that's our theory, but I don't think it'll work.
So did they say, when does the public health follow that?
Year and a half.
So we were running.
This is the last before we're even talking about year and a half. And one gal was, was in, she was, it was further east of us counties. One of the names Montgomery County, it's another county. Uh, she was working in, and she was working on combining those counties, and she directly asked, should I stop the work that I'm doing to get those two start operating the same? And they said, no, you should, don't stop any of the work that you're doing.
Bill Montgomery Page in Fremont. And I think she, she must be the health lady from Page County.
She's this share, Montgomery Page's share.
Yeah.
And Fremont's been enjoying them now, is my understanding. You know, I'm a writer, no, I'm not doing what the, we have veterans that are hot dog days. I have no idea how many people went in and out there eating hot dogs, but I'm gonna say two hundred and fifty plus. I mean, it was crowded from start to finish. My neighbor served in Vietnam, one of the first ones to fly in. Guy come up to box him, he says, when'd you leave? He said, I left in sixty-nine. November of sixty-nine, this guy took his place in December of sixty-nine. Spent fourteen months in this foxhole, he says, well, you really got to know your foxhole buddies. He says, very, but anyway. And we had a super board meeting that evening and uh Lonnie was there, I'm gonna let him cover it, so that's enough.
Yeah, that's about all I had, uh, it was a good super board meeting. Didn't really, there's no action ever taken, but it was a good share thoughts and ideas and work together on things, so. It was a good meeting.
Well, I'm with Richard, um, hot dog days is always something that the veterans have really enjoyed. And uh to just come on out for a free hot dog, it's amazing. But the family's calm and it's socializing, so I think we really had a good time. Also, Lonnie and I, we got our picture taken on the, um, they're having a Glenwood sign that is gonna be by Hickory Ridge, right there by thirty-four. Um, there was a gal that took this over as a leadership project, I'm very proud of her. She had come to the county to ask maybe for a little funding, and we gave her five thousand dollars from the ARCA fund. And Corey like, and, and, um, oh, she had a list of people that will do the work for free or, or such like, so, um, they needed fifty-four hundred dollars, so um, she went to Glenwood State, and Grant says, I'll give you five, you figure out the four hundred. So they came up with the other four hundred, so we will have a sign kind of like Marlboro and Emerson, so, or Imagee.
We don't have a sign. Emerson has.
No, I meant Imagee. So it lights up and sort of thing, so forty thousand dollars is what they had to come up with, and they reached that goal, and it sounds like this fall they're gonna start into building it, so.
And Lonnie's pictures are up here?
Uh-huh.
On the sign?
No. In a paper.
With a pie?
With pie.
I, I was gonna say that, well, not everything.
It's gonna be one of those.
That he's wavy?
Well, yeah, you know, if you go by, everybody waves at you, you know?
That'll shoot the copper into play.
And Golden Hills, as I said on the board, Kara Morgan is no longer going to be the, the CEO director, so we had an executive uh meeting the other day, and we are going to get an interim. Because we need to really take our time on this. We've had two applications, um, and they're okay, but we're hoping maybe we'll have a little bit. So, uh, it was unanimous vote that we will be having an interim to take over for a while. And with that, that's it.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Jacob, you're up. You wanna purchase a water tank?
Yeah, so this is for our, primarily for our hydro seeder, are looking to get water. We talked about getting hooked up. Uh, my plan is to go to a GMU board meeting at some point and see if we can reduce prices for tap fees, but even if we got the green light on everything right now, um, it still will take time to get to that. And we're looking to do some, we already use the seeder a little bit. We found the storage tank from Joe Benton.
How's he related to you?
For the other one.
For the other one, so he has a poly tank. Thirty-five hundred gallons. He's willing to sell it to us for nine hundred bucks, ten foot tall, eight foot diameter. And so what we would do with that, put it in the yard. We have a little hydro, just water hose, but we'd fill that with float valve that was put on it. And so we can just leave it, run it overnight, whatever, fill up thirty-five hundred gallons. Once it fills up, it'll cut it off. Have a little bit of money to get the pump, we can pump it off on a bigger line. Uh, the hydro seeder's a thousand gallon, so that's three and a half tanks right there. And plus, every time we go up to seed, it's still gonna be filling up, so. We think it's a very good, low cost, short term short term solution, but if it works out really well, then maybe that's our answer, and we just expand that and get a bigger tank, and that works. We also can use it, uh, if we plant it out and tie it right, uh, for like a water tank, we'll need water on the roads. If we're doing reclamation, uh, like usually we get water from Marlboro or something like that, that we need a lot, and that's an eight thousand gallon tanker.
You need a hydro for that, yeah.
But if we just need one tank, we could fill it at night, and by the time the tank fills up in the morning, come back in the morning, then we got eight thousand gallons for that day, so. We can also use it for more than just the hydros. Uh, like we rented the asphalt zipper, that requires water on it, we can pour right in the tank, so. For nine hundred bucks, we thought it was a pretty good price, and we wanna move forward with that.
Nine hundred?
Uh, do I need to step down?
Yes. I agree the most to approve that.
Chair will step down and second. There was a motion made and seconded to purchase water tank from Joe Benton. Thirty-five hundred gallons for nine hundred dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Eddie?
Okay, next on the list, um, talking with Merke's, getting ready to move forward with Marlboro. Uh, so we're gonna be doing the demo on that, so we gotta tear down the building, get it ready for Merke's to come in to build the new one. And so we're hoping to rent a pod, storage container, to put all of our tools and everything that we have in Marlboro during construction. We found one from Jim Hox Truck Trailers. For a forty foot container, it's a hundred and ninety-five dollars a month, but he does have a two hundred dollar delivery and pickup fee. We will only have it for, it'll depend on the construction. We have on the contract for construction to be completed by December first. So at most, I think it would be five months. But if they get in there and not get out quick, we'll only need it for three, we pay for three. We were going to look at, I think it was a twenty-five foot container, and it was only about twenty-five dollars cheaper a month, so we figured, let's just do the one that we know is big enough, have room to move stuff around a little bit, so.
And this is from Hopkins?
Jim Hox Truck Trailers. If we had it for five months, the total would be thirteen seventy-five.
Well, I move to make a motion to approve the rental of a forty foot pod, storage container. And this will be how soon?
August first.
Okay.
Is it okay to put a motion for me to sign this? Since then when we're finished with it, I can just sign the agreement again too. Or would you guys like to have your signature?
We made a motion.
That'd be fine.
For?
It's fine.
For me to sign?
Yeah.
You wanna put that in?
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, so I also move for, um, our engineer to sign the agreement with Jim Hox on the rental agreement, starting August first.
I will second the motion to rent that storage container for seven hundred and twenty-five a month, two hundred dollars, pick up and deliver fifty. One eighty-five.
Okay, I'm kinda hanging it straight.
Should get straight.
There was a motion made and seconded for a pod rental from Jim Hox Trucking Construction.
Truckers.
Hundred ninety-five dollars a month for rent, two hundred dollars pickup and delivery, total cost would be fifteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, starting. Making you guys on your toes here. Pick up and delivery would be eight-one, start of construction. Also, in the motion was to assign engineer to sign contract so that uh if it's cut short or anything, he can have him come pick it up, sign, and we can be done with it. Anyone have any questions, concerns? All the amount's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ooh. Motion carries. HVAC maintenance contract.
So we had a review with the Waldinger Corporation, that's who we hired to do our maintenance down there on all of our HVAC equipment, air compressor. And so, you kind of put this nice package together, went through all the costs that we did incur. And uh, you know, minor repairs that we had to do, everything that we are, uh, that they are checking and providing service and maintenance to. Throughout, they have a schedule in here, some things they have to, you know, run tests on, once a year or something, every three months. All that's in here. The new annual agreement price would be seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. So invoice total of six hundred and forty-seven dollars per month is what we will be billed. He estimates we have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of HVAC equipment, um, down there, so.
Over the total amount of the contract.
So we said six. Yeah. So that's why we're putting the money throughout with the maintenance, protecting that initial estimate, so.
So Jake, explain to me, how, does this help the insurance? You know, when they, do they ever come back and say, have you done any maintenance on all this equipment? Would this help your?
We don't have insurance on the equipment, unless it's a fire or something. Right, like, there's no warranty, because I'm very, I think you know?
Yeah.
No.
No.
So basically, the warranty's gone, it's already over.
Got it.
They don't just be the one, the other one, since we accepted, yeah.
Okay, I was just hoping that with the, spending that kind of money, that it would decrease the insurance cost, but like, we don't have.
I don't think so, because our insurance recovered a maintenance failure. It would be like, if it got destroyed or something. In these cases, it would matter, but it's perfect.
I made the motion to approve the annual maintenance contract with Waldinger for three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four annually. Is this a one-year contract?
It's a one-year contract. They say typically it's five percent, but he's saying a little. For some reason, it's a smart size, you know?
I second that.
Yeah.
Motion made to approve contract for HVAC maintenance contract, seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars six forty-seven a month, or thirty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Chairman, figure you'd like to have.
Who's your last figure?
Put a four on it. I had it, he said five, but.
Seven, seven, six, four.
Yeah.
Something else we'd like to sign.
Any questions, concerns? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You are an AC machine?
This is for our mechanics. You guys remember when we were putting budget together, I had this on the list, to purchase an AC machine, budgeted eight thousand. This is from Snap-on. A Polar Tech Plus AC machine, total price, seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. He has three different options on this quote. The one that we would need or want is the top one, which is the figure of the situation. So this will allow us to work on the air conditioning units on our vehicles.
Okay, so, what does this look like or consist of?
So.
Is.
I'm a mechanic, so I'm out of my realm here.
But the guys know how to do this?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. For seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Seven thousand.
Five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Fifty-six.
And fifty-nine cents.
Everything costs the same, Jake. Doesn't matter if it's water tank?
This is budgeted then?
Yeah, we budgeted eight thousand somewhere. Right there. We can go with these other ones, fifteen thousand or eleven thousand.
Yeah, budget. Why is there such a big?
Do we, do we, uh, have anything in, in the mechanics line now, I mean, as far as what they're using, or do they have somebody come in and do it?
Yeah, we can, especially with the newer ones. I think we have something for the older ones, but my understanding is they changed the type of freon and the gases or something. We looked into this, this one will work for either the new pickup center here in twenty twenty-five, so. Yeah, like, some of the old stuff, we can do some of the work on it, but when it gets into that, we can.
I move to make a motion to approve to purchase this AC machine. And it's by Snap-on?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded to purchase an AC machine for the shop. Seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, next, so, our IR truck that got sold out from under us. Um, we saw another one that we're interested in. We got it, drove out to Hastings, took a look at it. It was a good truck, but they actually found a better one than the one that was there. Uh, like the pioneer equipment in Hastings. It's a two thousand and fifteen freight liner, Canada. The only thing with this one, um, it doesn't have a flatbed on it, so we have to put a flatbed on it. And pricing those out. The one from that place, they said they were looking at like nineteen thousand or, the price for the truck is thirty-nine thousand. Was thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred, they said they'd take thirty-nine flat, but they wouldn't go any lower than that. If you recall, we budgeted sixty thousand for this truck, so. This, it's a newer truck, less miles. Which looks really well, taken care of, uh. And so this is truck we'd like to go with. This, plus the flatbed and the hitch, everything we need for it, would still be right at that sixty thousand dollar budget that we had for it.
And what year is it?
This is two thousand and fifteen. So, it's up to you guys, do you want me to just leave it at this and bring it back later? Do the last motion, uh, we guys approved this for a truck at like forty-eight thousand. It's a different truck, but for the same reasons. How do you guys, is the technicality should still probably bring back?
Yeah, yeah, dollar wise, yeah.
Okay. And that's why they signed, uh, an agreement where we can hold it for fourteen weeks.
Which is sort of good.
Hastings, Nebraska.
What kind of ones?
Two hundred and sixty-nine. And the other exciting news today and Friday, uh, interviews for the engineering tech position. Both of the candidates, one of them has a survey background, so excited to to interview him, he seems excited about the job, very responsive, quick to answer my emails and messages. Uh, that one's today, and then so was Friday. I put an ad on Indeed.com to help attract, and I'm getting some people on there. Two or three people have applied on Indeed, we're inviting them to do our county application, they haven't made that step yet, so. We may have more in the works, but right now we're definitely two or at least one that, and possibly more, so. Yes, that's looking good. We're getting millings down on Eastman, we saw a Facebook post, uh, kind of working through it, it's, it can be really good, and then they get part of a pile, we're getting chunks. We've got two graders out there breaking it up, smooth it out. It's a very noticeable difference right now with the dust control, so that's good. It'll take some time to get all smoothed out, worked in. We're gonna finish Eastman up, and then we're gonna let it sit, work it for a week or so. See if there's any changes we'd need to make before we get deep in. You know, if it's, okay, yeah, we can do a little bit heavier on the millings, or back it off a little bit. We'll kind of figure that out with Eastman, see how it settles, apply that. So that's going well.
So will this with rain and constant, will it be like, I don't know, will it ever pack down like it's been?
If you, that's the trick, is you, you don't wanna put too much, because then it will come packed to a hard surface. But then, that's where you'll get potholes, and you can't grade it then.
Oh.
If you put too much, it will turn like to a pavement, but it doesn't have proper
Like your painting?
So you will get potholes on washboards, and then the grater, a lot of heck of a time trying to pencil, so. We're trying to do a fifty-fifty blend where it's still workable, but it's still holding that, holding that dust in that, helping seal it.
Good, good.
It's a little.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
But right now.
A lot of people.
Yeah, we're getting some good feedback, I suppose, so. Other than that, I've had conversations with the developer, uh, from the subdivisions we talked about last time. Uh, very responsive, we're working together with the yeah, uh, the designers back in, back in the ballgame. Very responsive, we're working together with the designers back in, back in the ballgame. And goes through the proper steps and the requirements to get it fully accepted and get everything corrected, so that's moving forward, so... Um, I think that's about it.
Okay. Super.
Anything for me?
I'm good.
I will let you off in a little bit.
All right.
Sure is nice to have the guy knowing our features, that sure is nice, makes the roads look pretty nice.
And he's after it.
Oh, and sir, cutting down flowers? Oh geez.
Why didn't you make another plan? You only cut part of the leaves. What's the problem?
You can't make everybody happy, but overall, I think we're doing pretty well.
I do too.
Go ahead. Hello, hello. How are you guys doing? Really magic. You're right, right, right. I've got to get some spreadsheet on the back page of that, just gonna show it to you. It's kind of messy, but it's all there. Just a job duty. This is... Oh, pool fee. Well, it's really, it's pools and tattoos parlors, there's the contract with the city of Iowa. It used to be pools standing in the tattoos, where you got inspect all the public swimming pools. Tattoo parlors, anten salons, they deregulated the cannon salons a while back. So those really aren't a deal anymore. I don't know if they have tattoo parlors.
Two.
Two tattoo parlors.
No. Oh, I want to frame on some of them. I did not put those on this spreadsheet.
So the swimming pool inspections, you see it's kind of got broken down. They have different categories of what you charge for. You charge for your swimming pool, charge for your wading pool, and your spa, you charge for the slides as well. So, facilities might not get just one charge. You know, most of them have a swimming pool and a slide, then they're gonna get two charges on there. They have a swimming pool, a wading pool, and a slide, and then you get three charges on there for that inspection of it. They're, they are important inspections for the public, because chemicals can be off. If you have hotel pools, they can be scary. I think after you do a couple inspections of hotel pools, you probably never get back into one of them again. Just based on their, to be their nature, you know, they're looking at the system in there to make sure that it's exhausting out, all the chemicals right. And just the chemical balance, certified pool operators, each one of us has a super certified pool operator on site that manages those pieces for them, and going to do the records check. Make sure that they're keeping all the records that they're supposed to be keeping, make sure that the chemicals are checked, that they're a great balance. For them, that's a safe, sanitary environment for people to use in there.
So, can I ask you, when did we start going to Claralt, Lennox, and Bedford, and Glisska?
And...
All those places?
Before my time. I would say that's...
So we always have?
Yeah, that's, I've got quite a few lists of years that might get a month for them.
The state doesn't, so this is one that has been legalized on point in L C, is this one, this contract here. So the state won't give you just no scouting. They want you to take this area to go do it in. Use Shelley County was a big inspector of these things. Previous, twenty years ago, Shelley County probably did half the state for swimming pools and food stations. Yeah, that's why, I mean, they have the, they have the health department out there to back it up, it's extensive, so...
So then we, I hope, charge them mileage?
No.
We don't charge them mileage?
There is a certain charge for the size of the pool.
And how come we don't charge them mileage?
Well, and that's why I'm here today. I don't charge mileage, I just want to do percentage increase across the board, so... As if we charged mileage, Bedford, Lennox are gonna get an astronomical increase, and I'm gonna get two dollars. So I might, I just kind of want to do it one day.
So when he goes out to do those inspections too, he doesn't drive out to Lennox and then drive back, right? He'll drive, he tries to drive out there, do Lennox, Bedford, Glisska, all at one time, once we're through.
At least two in a day.
Yeah.
So I'm not adding miles to that. In this, at the bottom there, there's three highlighted. One on top is revenue as we have now, twenty-four hundred dollars, which is actually underestimated, because this is estimated for absolute maximum miles an hour, if I get every pool one at a time. So we do have at least twenty-five hundred dollars in revenue, actually more than that, from me doing this.
I just don't want our tax dollars to be paying for you going out there.
Right, you don't want to supplement other counties.
Well, I get that.
And it's to be a user key thing, and so on the upper right-hand corner, he, he's broken out for you to say what his, you know, his wages are on there. It's almost subtracting. Yeah, with the total hours, it's something like twenty-two hours to get these done, so your cost of wages has seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Mileage value would be on the expanded quarter, forty-seven dollars. So, all of that taken out, that leaves you with that twenty-four hundred dollars of revenue. So the pool inspections, as it sits right now, bring in thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-sixteen.
Got it.
So with the county's costs subtracted out of that, that's a revenue of twenty-four.
So Matt, tell me, how do we know when people have pools or not?
You get a list, the state, because they have to get a license, they have to get their permit from the state. That's what this is for, so that they can have their license to operate, right? They have to, you have to have the inspection, so...
The vote for these are for public?
Right, all public, they're all public. Yeah, there's no private pools on there.
Lonny Mayberry doesn't tell you to say, kind of, "Stop my pool."
Not necessarily start charging your neighbors, or someone or something. You need to have a neighborhood association pool potentially on there, but I don't think you have to do this down here. So it's, it's low, so I mean, you're bringing in thirty-six hundred dollars, you subtract your costs out of there, and right now it's a revenue for environmental health of twenty-four hundred dollars. I mean, that's... It's a new little revenue generation piece for environmental health. But this is probably something that the fees have been, you know, if Matt's been doing this for quite a while, the fees have never been adjusted.
I don't know, but I have been involved in six...
I think it's time to adjust it for sure.
It'd look like it says within the code here at the bottom, that the local inspection agency may establish fees needed to defray costs of inspection.
I'm not sure if this is one of them, that's why I said some fees they get, but maybe they didn't include it.
Current fees are...
They may not be that high yet, you know what I mean? Like the code, like...
And yours, that's some...
State.
State code?
Yeah.
That's it.
I don't think that there's a...
Absolutely.
In the contract, in the contract that you have with the state, there's a maximum fee scheduled in there.
Uh, the fees are set by the size of the pool. And, but I even put the code here at the bottom, but it does say the local inspection agency may establish fees needed to defray costs of inspection and portion them under this chapter. So we can raise the prices up.
I'm with Lonny, I think we need to raise them. I mean, that's pretty, pretty low.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't changed in thirteen years, but that's what I thought was, why do I have to be charged a little extra? Because I do have to travel a long way to do that.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
So being, what I, what my recommendation to you all would be is that you do, that you do approve the increase of them. And this is something that we should probably, we should bring back annually, look at, see the costs you're doing. So this year, if you went with the middle of the road, kind of a ten percent increase on it, and then come back next year and look at, and then potentially another five percent if we on there.
Why not go with the seventy cents per mile?
And fifty percent.
And a fifty percent.
Hold them low and charge higher than your county rate, right? If your Mills County mileage rate is a sixty-three cents per mile?
Oh.
I just put those up there.
Got it.
Numbers, which sixty-three, yeah?
So if you want sixty-three cents per mile...
I said sixty-three cents.
And fifteen percent?
Mm-hmm.
Take your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Me, seven fifteen percent increase?
And then have this looked at every year?
Right, we'll start with...
You're still not gonna catch up, you know, if that one? It seems like a big investment, that's a few hundred dollars.
Yeah, we'll bring it back right in a bunch of time.
Okay.
You know, that way you can just get them on a bunch of sales.
Perfect.
Say, the action taken on pool fees would be to set county mileage rate at sixty-three cents, with a fifteen percent increase. And this two hundred and... Twenty-nine ninety-five eighty-six, is what it would increase to, or is that an approximate?
Uh, where's that number at? Probably ninety-five eighty-six. Yeah, and it's actually gonna be more than that, because this is maximum miles, if I did one pool at a time. It's like if you're...
Motion made and seconded. I'll repeat that we set the mileage rate at sixty-three cents a mile, and a fifteen percent increase for this year being renewed or looked at at budget time, correct?
Correct.
Any more discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We should carry. Okay, truck for environmental service.
So we're gonna have to do on that, there's some more revision change.
Correct.
So, um, environmental health obviously covers a lot of ground in Mills County. Just doing subject inspections, well inspections, nuisance, animal control things, all pieces, and probably more. You know, water testing, all of those deals. And currently, he's driving his own vehicle, it's gonna reimburse back in mileage. And I mentioned before that he's having a benefit by providing a vehicle to the inspector, rather than paying out mileage for him. You know, example of it is, is just like within this current month, he's already traveled over a thousand miles around, but it's gonna reimburse the mileage. And when I heard the sheriff's office, it was just decommissioning their pickup truck, had some hail on it.
Have you seen it?
I've seen it drive around, I've driven around. I actually got a...
I have seen it, it's in the...
But the pickup's good. Josh, it's gonna need a new transmission sooner than later. But I don't know how soon that is, I, that's all I know.
But I, I agree. I feel like, you know, if it's not being driven in a sheriff's office capacity, where it's probably, there's some hard driving, right? They're rushing out to get somewhere, obviously he's not driving with those same kind of things in acceleration, so... It probably still has a lot of useful life left in the vehicle. And so that would be, what my recommendation is, is I know the sheriff was planning on getting some money out of it by going through the auction, and I think he had figured it up around a few thousand dollars or somewhere that he had mentioned to the board. But if the board could find a way to reimburse him whatever he was gonna potentially make at the auction on that truck, you know, I think Matt could get a couple of years out of that truck. To really kind of show them what the benefit is of having that vehicle versus paying out not a year of mileage to somebody. Because, I think it's, was it, is it fourteen thousand that's budgeted for mileage in environmental health, so budget?
Okay, so last, well, through the, I just wanted to talk a couple of years. So when you've got like five thousand, eight hundred in mileage, and another four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars, I mean, it's very somebody's guy.
Five grand a year.
Yeah.
So if he took four of those years, he potentially paid for, you know, a new vehicle to be driven. That new vehicle, you should get eight to ten years out of that potentially, and driving for this. So then you're just down to gas and maintenance costs on the vehicle.
So why do you think we need to give the sheriff department eight thousand dollars? It's county-owned.
They, yes, it is, yes. They sell it, and they use that money, and that's a down payment.
They're on...
It comes in, in general, it's, it's a circle.
Got it.
Yes, you're right, but it is... They're gonna do inspection in them that will help later on. But it does go back in the...
Uh, well, is there another vehicle from emergency baggage, or do they, is that just sitting there?
Yeah. That's the one that's up there.
Right, yeah, I was told, is Travis hiring another person? He's got to get his position up and stuff, so we've got two people on foot.
That's not his truck, so that's the, well, I mean, it's, it's the one that Stephen O'Scar's guy. That's, it's like, it's for checkout for people in county if they need it.
Oh.
So I mean, it's...
So they use that?
Travis is the person when it happens, I'm aware of.
And I checked the roads, I talked to Jake, he did, he did have two trucks, but they were holding on to them. As next year, he thought he could make a change.
He's gonna change.
Yeah, so if they're gonna make a change, you know, he would let me know, but... You know, really what you can do with these inspections, you can kind of use those, hand them down, be able to use for that. It doesn't necessarily have to be something that's brand new, so... Like, you know, if we get this to work out with the sheriff's department, then, you know, later on, if they get to do a decommissioning, something else, and you can check with them. We'll stay in touch with roads, you know, if they decide that they're gonna get rid of one, that we can still use for a while. What do we budget for, what do we budget for mileage for him this year? Fourteen thousand, so? I thought that that's what the number was, when we went through it, but we'd have to have...
So, last year...
I just, we have paid him.
I'm planning here.
Yeah, between, oh, yeah. This was almost six thousand a year, and then just over four thousand another year.
Oh, okay.
But that one is available for checkout. Guys, we have here, so Brady went.
If we have to make budgeting for it, I'd rather use it on our vehicles instead of getting anywhere else.
My suggestion would be, let's keep this on the agenda and stuff, till we get some actual figures from everybody, you know, sitting here going, well, yeah, we think of this, we think of that.
Well, is the transmission going out on the truck?
I can give it to the sheriff.
Okay.
He was saying, yeah, he thought it would be around December, when they would actually get, get off the truck. Let's see what you, let's wait a minute some time. But I just want to make sure, we have a horn's radar, so that way, sure, kind of, we're...
Figure out what we, uh, guys, figure out the line item we budgeted for mileage to reverse the two, so... That's where we would get it, though, we don't have to budget the name.
Okay, well, let's table this, so we can get more information, correct?
Correct.
All right, everybody?
Okay.
Appreciate it. It's hard to get anything to make this place that on my own truck, I had to have it all.
Great, great.
It's tough.
Do you drive every day?
I do. I mean, there, there can be one day here and there that's, I really don't, I never had to go anywhere, so I just sit in the office and catch up on paper.
Right.
For the most part, I drive every day, going somewhere.
Okay.
I probably never really stop sharing.
So once you check the pool, is it, you recheck it after a year?
Every, once a year.
Once a year, so, got it.
I have had to close pools before, because they're not safe.
We're gonna close them, so it can change some of the things too.
Oh, yeah. Normalize a little bit this year, right?
We're talking about years.
Probably just kind of slowing things down, but...
Right, right.
Well, yeah, also, we've got a job duties, environmental services. We had border health meeting the other night, and it was brought up that who's going to, to handle dog bites?
Yeah, because it's technically a public dog thing.
And that's why I tried to tell them, and they said, well, we don't, I says, folks, how many people's in the office? I mean, most of it was done by the veterinarian anyway, if it's, if it's a dog bite.
Val covered me a couple of times.
Right.
When I was on vacation, she covered a dog bite a couple of times, I mean, it's.
Well, logically, isn't it, of the health? That's.
It is.
It's a part of their epidemiology, so whoever's doing their disease investigations, who really will follow up on their dog bites for that. Because you're going through that same process, you're checking to see if the dogs were vaccinated. If it hasn't been vaccinated, then you're following up with the same quarantine and isolation procedures that you would with a person in other situations, right? So there's a lot of similarities between those two things, of isolation, quarantine, piece of it with rabies and animals as it is with people. And just say like tuberculosis on there, so you would have those same people.
Sure.
Who are doing that, so, and it does not, contrary to what people may say, it doesn't necessarily take a specific skill set or individual experience. You're not asking them to be able to do your thing, or you're just asking them to follow up on the dog bite. You know, my personal, I obviously get involved, they should have a policy, and they should send them off. Don't tackle it.
And if you're worried about going somewhere, you know, it's always, you can take ask long, which is a good one. I never have, but there have been times when I kind of wish I had. People aren't always pleasant.
Uh, do we have any questions and stuff, you know, on environmental services and stuff for us?
Can we take that off this way?
What's that?
Getting on the dog rights.
That's what I told him, I said, it's done by public health, he is no longer a public health, well, we feel he's, he's always done it. I says, that doesn't make any difference, I says, he's not in public health.
And I think if you want to go through the paperwork, it's something that you want to do, right?
It's not that hard, too.
I'm good with that.
I will bring that up.
What, what do you know about dog bites? I mean, once you go to a nurse.
I mean, he knows a lot now.
I usually.
Depends on how big the dog is.
I call the rabies hotline and I say bye one time. When there's something I don't know, because they know the answers, and you ask them and they help you get through the process.
Oh, my gosh.
It's true.
I mean, logically, you would just make you go through public health.
Yeah, I mean, it's a disease.
Exactly right. So do we need to make that as a motion?
I don't think so.
That's not on.
No, just general discussion.
Oh, I just, I'm going to the option.
Okay.
You're all right with it, we're all right with it, on public health.
Whatever you guys decide to do, I'll keep doing my job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get it off your plate. I bet not. I bet not.
One thing, it's in the state meeting that Richard and I attended up there, was the state was going, it sounded like they're going to kind of double down on environmental health. And expand out a little bit the state's capability to be able to assist local environmental health people when, if there is a cancer cluster identified. They're really kind of going after cancer. If you've been watching the national news, you've seen how Iowa has really spiked up in cancer rates nationally. We're almost, if we're not the leader, we're one of the top states for cancer. And so I think the state is really working to try to combat that. And they're going to have state-level priests, people that can come down into the area and really try to look at environmental health factors in rural environments that may be causing, maybe the cause of a cancer cluster in that area, whether it's water or other environmental factors that they have. So I thought that was encouraging, because when the original report came out, it looked as though like they were somewhat discounting environmental health of it. And so now, but now.
So Iowa is ranked as number one for cancer area?
Yeah, it really spiked up, we had like a twenty-five percent increase over the last few years of.
We don't live well.
Well, it's all that cattle litter.
Well, I think it's stress from pipeline, solar farms.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Well, I have you here on another note, on your zoning app. Do we have special event? I know we talked about special events and adding that into our ordinance and we've got a ice cream cruise coming up. We're going to be talking with some other local businesses around tomorrow. Are you invited to that?
So it sounds like Augur did some digging into this, it sounds like it went before a planning commission about adding in some special events, so it did not make it.
I knew we discussed it, but I didn't think it made it that far.
Yeah, all the way around, so.
Do we have any teeth that we can use to control traffic volumes in and out?
I will have to look further into the code to see what, what things, because it could depend on where they're having that. The other part we have to look at is if it's a, I mean, is it, of this ice cream social, is it something that's associated with egg in any way?
Nope. It's.
Little racetrack people down there.
Oh, the racetrack.
But it just brings in thousands of people, I mean, it backs up the interstate.
Yeah, and I'm getting ready to send them, I am going to send them out of those violation, because there is nothing in the Mills County ordinance that allows that to be happening. So zoning ordinance, when, if something is not in the zoning ordinance, that does not then make it allow use, because they're like, well, it's not in the zoning ordinance. It's not the way zoning works, zoning, if it's not in there, then it is not going to allow use. If you want it in there, you need to apply for and have that, have the text added into the zoning ordinance to make it either conditional use or a principal use of that property. So the fact that we don't have that in there is because, you know, it's not a wise idea to hold large events like that on a gravel road in the west of this where you don't have traffic.
This will be unpaved road across from.
Everybody's trying south of John Deere there, Wes.
It's not a.
It shuts down gloves, shuts down BP, shuts down agribusiness.
Shut down one hundred and eighty-fifth street, which bothers me more, so you can't get to agribusiness, so. It, it's tomorrow morning, would you be able to sit in on that at all, if you're.
Nine o'clock, you're going.
You guys have another set of ice and ears there that's involved, are going to be involved in it?
Yeah, I'll make it work.
We appreciate it very much.
Also, man, did you see my email about the Enduro dirt bike racing is going to happen next month?
Yes, that was one I was looking for.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
The Enduro race, yeah. The hill climb or whatever.
Yes. Does he have to get a permit? Because last year we kind of shook the beehive. And he wants to do it right now in case he has other accidents, then we've got to call in the Glenwood.
Right, that's, again, that's another event that's not listed out in there in the zoning ordinance, so I mean, he's kind of behind the ball right now. Because you have to apply for it to get something through the planning commission, even where superiors are just making a lot of activity happen. And it would be conditional use because there's obviously things that maybe put out in the emergency management, you evolve them, so it's harder to really evolve.
Well, and Matt Grace said, just let me know, you know, when they were called out to go to this last year, he said, oh, where, where are we, are we supposed to go? So that's why I had everybody come around the table and to find out where this assault is to take a bit, a little bit, so. And Matt says, as long as he knows, he will hire extra people for standby. But Alex is just wondering, now that he understands everybody on the same wavelength, is it a permit that he needs to come in and pick up or?
It's not as simple as that, you have to go through the zoning board adjustment, we would have to get something going now. So, but if you have his phone number or something, it wants to get, right, like, if you send me his phone number, I'll reach out there.
Okay, all right, I will do that.
We'll get to go on that. So what's the ice cream social?
Cruise.
It's ice cream cruise and it's.
Three days.
Um, it's, 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 it's the same, ten thousand people, five thousand.
It is crazy.
It was out of racetrack.
Yeah.
Oh, that's pretty strong. And they have drag races and games and stuff all day long and it's a big event.
We didn't even know about it.
Try their plastic cars and stuff too. And they. I come from the west here last year and they actually overtake street light down there. Because they can't turn left, not enough time, so they all go into gloves and BP. And that gives two lanes straight across when they go, they take both lanes of the highway into the racetrack. And A and M Green Power is shut down. No one can get in, no one can get out.
So now they're delaying it, so it's in the middle of harvesting. And John Deere is not going to be happy, because there was a farmer that parked at BP and wanted to, John Deere to give his park.
Oh, wow.
Because he had to have that park. So agribusiness said that's not going to happen yet. How'd you get that for?
Uh, reinforced.
They moved it back later in September.
Yeah, twenty-fifth.
Yeah, this is twenty-three, but.
Did you see the traffic number there?
Look at that, it's nuts.
They have some focus in there, you can see.
The first year they did that, they did it right, they, they had extra deputies and cops with it. But last year they wanted to do it on their own. And it was not good. And we didn't know anything about it that first year until Josh was talking about it.
We welcome it, we just, we'd like to ensure that the other businesses around there have access to work, or, you know, they're open Saturdays and Sundays, right?
I mean, they closed the road themselves.
Well, it backs up on thirty-four, then twenty-nine, and then they got ramps. You know, the DOT is involved now, they'll be there. I just want all of our players at the table.
What's that?
I thought I sent an invite for it to go out.
You done.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Huddyman, I think we'll skip one and move to you. I'm quite sure they're here, they're here in imminent domain.
Okay, and I make copies for you guys?
What this is, is a resolution that. Just put on file so we know something that, you know, gas line or something like that, wants to come across the county. I have not passed this in front of the county attorney yet. It's probably been run over by county attorneys, legislators.
So this is what Tom passed out of here as well?
It was written by Whipple. I do, it was written by Tim Whipple.
Okay.
Smart saying. Yeah, this resolution draft by Tim Whipple.
Uh, our Taylor's and Cooney Law Firm in Des Moines. He has presented that ISA before several times. What I would ask for is that we present this to the county attorney, have her look it over and stuff. Put it on the agenda the next week or so and.
How do we stop this?
You don't.
You don't.
I mean, that's why it's called imminent domain.
Well, the idea of imminent domain is it's not to be used for private use.
And we can stop that.
Well.
Probably, one of the reasons I wanted you to endorse this is Mills County, it will be used as legislation against some of the parties. There's legislatures, within the next legislative session, are probably finally going to get off their ass and go to work to stop him or redirect him. One of the, the only I U B member that was not reappointed by the governor, in his vote stated that the mileage from Sioux City to Shenandoah was ridiculous. That it can be eliminated since now there's a pipeline coming over, or a proposed pipeline coming over through Montgomery County and angling up. They don't need both of them, but Ross Sitter's big buddy is in Shenandoah, and that's why there's nine hundred and eighty miles of pipeline. Originally, see that line down east of Emerson, it's only going to be a four inch line. Now it's ten or twelve. It just, it's no different than the solar farm, once you open the can of worms that the I U B can say, well, you know, we can just do whatever we want to with private land, then you'll never stop it.
Right.
And I think, I look back, I think there's twenty-six counties that have signed this.
Endorsed.
Endorsed in the state of Iowa.
Good.
They got enough, they got enough power now, maybe they can tell the legislators, hey, a third of the state wants you to do something.
Right.
Due to the county attorney, it's due to these.
Which that's where it should have been at first place.
Exactly.
It should have never gone to the I U B, they have, they don't have any clearistic, it's, this is not electrical bills, this is not gas fees.
That's what the state's going to do, they're going to, just like solar and wind and everything else, they're going to say, I don't care what your ordinance is, say, this is what you'll.
Maybe not.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, maybe not, because if you read the code about home rule, it has, which is what you operate under, it has a law string. Your governor may not think so right now, because she's kind of flying high, but, and I'm a lifelong Republican, but I wouldn't vote for her if she was up for Mills County dog catcher. She, she's lost her mind. And Brad Sitter, if you ever noticed, when he was in governor, he never went anywhere without her, because my good friend, two years ahead of me in high school, Jimmy Hicks, was his roommate Drake, he is not a good speaker, he gets real nervous when the public crowds him. So he took her with him constantly. And I don't know, she's not professionally educated, but she's real good shooter. And now she's figured out she can't run again, so she's no different than mental health. She's going to slam this stuff through, same way with education, monies to private schools, all these vouchers, she's going to push them through, so. This, this is, you know, anything you can do to represent, if the county feels this way, now if you don't think the public feels this way, then don't say it.
But I don't endorse it. Maybe I'm talking about many, many farmers and stuff. They said, well, what are you doing about it? I said, well, we're looking to sign a resolution, I says, that's about all we can do for now, but at least we can push our legislators to do something. Because, got some good comments on that section too, so.
Yeah, well, you need to get it through here.
Would you like to see a resolution, some language that the board met on that's endorsing a pair resolution, saying we are essentially throwing our weight behind this initiative? Or you're looking for like, like your own resolution like this, if they invested something to the effect of, you know, Mills County is throwing its hat in the ring at these other counties that is in opposition to this initiative by the state.
Mr. Whipple states in here that this can be, the heading can be changed to any county in the state of Iowa.
Because I do notice, there was, it was a fun thing though, it's listed in the last section of this, whereas the Putney V Iowa Utilities Board case, I was reporting out of Supreme Court. Fairly controversial, when it came out, it essentially, the Iowa Supreme Court sided with something about pipeline access, it was like, the state does have companies in domain too.
Yeah.
And that was, that was very controversial, still much.
The state, that's just given it to a private utility, that's, that's our biggest concern, I don't want to, I don't want to give a private utility.
Yeah, and obviously the.
State government school, yeah.
The main problem right now is that exactly that you're using an domain to pass property to a private actor for economic gain, that's not part of the domain.
Right.
Certainly, you can change the heading, essentially said we endorse.
That's our goal.
As passed by.
Even with the schools, cities, governments, states.
The pipeline.
They needed to, if you got to put a road in in Mills County or whatever, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It comes with growth.
But it was different, you know.
Pipeline case that the Supreme Court was basically, the Supreme Court said it was safety. As soon as the pipeline said, well, if we don't get the Dakota Access Pipeline, there'll be this many cartels of oil on the old Rock Island line going through Ames. the, the old Rock Island Line going through Ames, Iowa, and if one of those cars tips over, this is how many gallons of oil in there, or this is how many semis it takes to haul this oil. Because basically the landowners had it won until that was brought up, and there was the gavel, and it was over. It was put it underground. And they're still struggling with the effects of that. So.
Where are those spoken?
Well, no, it was a public, the court, the recordings were that it was public safety. And.
An environmental impact.
Right, environmentally, but the environmental impact of the pipeline, if you, to this day, you can view aerial photos where that goes down through the farmland and, I don't know, Brother Mark, for thirty years took care of all the outline research for Iowa State, so it went through all their properties. And to this day, it isn't necessarily where they cut the tile or where the pipeline actually is, it's the road adjacent to it that does not yield. They had trouble with all the pipe, all the tile crossings, and you know how flat it is up there?
Yeah.
When they dug it up, it wasn't where they cut the tile. It's where the traffic was, and the tile that wasn't disturbed actually made a P trap. And they're on less than a tenth of a grade up there for flow on those districts. So he said, we didn't just dig up the slot, the pipeline was, we had to dig up thirty, forty, fifty feet and go down, then you have to put lifts under just, because you're digging up undisturbed soil to support the tile, so it doesn't do it again. Even though we're not driving up and down it with all this heavy equipment. Um, it is, you can still see it today. It's a terrible impact. But if you bring that up, you know, it's just, oh, we'll fix it. I mean, it, it's just ridiculous, this is just a statement by the county, and you are not the county, I realize that. If you somehow want to put it out publicly, I don't care, I just think it's something that the county could do against eminent domain.
Support.
Right, right.
Yep.
Well, what I'd like to know is how many pipelines are in the ground now not being used?
More than you would believe.
Well, the reason I know is because the landfill out here was wanting to redirect the methane and stuff, they wanted to go through NIMLs. I don't know who the gentleman is that finds next to thirty four out here, but they both objected, so they went and they talked to Kendra Morgan. They have a pipeline that runs through everybody's property, they would allow them to hook into it. The reason being is it's been empty for years, they, they pumped nothing through it. I mean, they tore out a thirty six inch years, two years ago.
Well, there was one taken out, you know, where it runs into the booster station.
Yeah.
What was that, only five years ago, they took a small one out, and it hadn't been used since that war.
So I'm thinking, okay, what, why can't they tap into these lines in different places?
That hasn't been used.
That's not being used.
Well, they haven't been maintained though either, Richard.
Yeah.
It's just like this mess that Dylan's going to allow the ethanol plants to pump three thousand pounds CO2 through those old gas lines? Why that won't last, they'll kill somebody out there in the San Joas. Cause when, when that blows up, if you've ever seen the model, the plume on that is huge. And that's sand, it's, it, it doesn't have the weight of our soil, it, it's, I'm pretty sure he just did have to get them off his back. Mrs. Seifel can tell you, cause she and her sister own a farm, a ranch out of property.
Well, I'm sure you saw that video when the pipeline exploded in Mississippi?
Yes.
I mean, that, that just turned your stomach. You can't see it, you can't smell it?
Personally, he's a bully, he always has been. And he's going to get his money. He's going to get our money, build it and sell it, so he's going to get paid twice.
Sure.
Well, and my, my point in my discussion earlier about the solar farm, none of this would have ever come to mind. Maybe a few windmills, but none of this, if the money wasn't just being shoveled out of the federal government.
So sure.
And this carbon thing, worldwide, if you study the utility properties of Germany, France, they're completely different. One's electrical grid is perfect, the other one is a mess. One's used trying to use renewable energy, it's a disaster. France uses small nuclear reactors, yet perfect utility. No problems, no, they can manage them, they're not big plants, and they look. Germany is, it's a mess, it's just a mess. Sweden, Norway on the sea, they use, they facilitate their electrical with renewable, but they're at sea, they're out in the ocean, or they use wave motion to generate, which is under the water, uh, electricity, but they also have. Just encouraging you to make a stand, folks. The other thing is, I would be more than willing to come over, or you could have a special meeting, and I would furnish you with a simplified Rules of Robert's Orders, so that your meetings were pristine, if you'd be interested. Richard's writing no over and over and over. No, I, I don't have any criticism of what you're doing, you're doing a great job, but it would flow a lot better, and your auditor would shudder. Did you know, for instance, that you as the chairman, you do not have to recite the motion, all you have to do is turn to your clerk and say, this is the motion in question, please read it, and she, who is responsible for it.
Oh, it's on your back.
You don't, if you miss.
Well, I do, I know that.
If you misquote it, it's on you.
Well, I missed, or I quoted, and I'm asking, okay, or does everyone okay it? You know, if you got any questions, concerns?
That's discussion on the motion. If you misquote the motion and she writes it down and it's, the question is approved, it's on you.
No, I'm, I'm open to all information or guidelines and help things run smoothly, because I've set in on some meeting that I'm saying, everyone, folks, you can't do this, you folks, you can't do this.
I think that would be very interesting.
Well, the biggest thing we have with, with meetings around here by different boards and stuff is they want to add things to the agenda after they get started. I said, you can't do that. Why not? It's, it would be overdone with it, I said. People didn't know about it, you can't put it on the agenda after you approve the agenda.
So, um.
I got.
Tom, doesn't that need to be our eminent domain, does it need to be a motion?
There's no explanation.
No, this was just a general discussion.
Well, we go ahead and.
I'll prepare, I'll prepare a resolution, uh, essentially a mirror into this one, saying that we endorse the following, and then the committee can action items.
Okay.
Actually, the only thing I'll have to change, I'll, I'll take apart about submitting a brief, because obviously Mills County's in a brief, but beyond that, if we see, da, 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 all the counties that have done this, we endorse.
I think you're right too, Richard, the last time I heard, you know, I, there's been seven or eight, Jan said, that have come on in the last two weeks and signed this. So I'm not up with that.
The last I saw was twenty six counties.
And you, you probably know all the people in the legislature. What I was going to say is, we've been working on this for three years, and my trips to, to the Capitol Building, the Republicans were not our friends. Both of these guys, they're waiting for that Christmas bonus from Rasta. It, it's pretty sad. But some of them are kind of get what they.
Is that true size or double, double?
True. Well, the editor has to do everything, doesn't she?
Yeah, he does.
Not everything.
That's all I had, Richard.
You could have brought.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate it very much.
I could have brought pie.
Could have had a break by now and had a piece of pie on top.
Yeah, well, I'm still scooping corn, so.
Is Betty enjoying her sweet set?
Yes, but it's been too hot.
Oh.
And Bill's.
Does she have a little swimming pool that she?
She does at Grandma's, and she is a fish, and her mother is a swimmer, so. She's been watching the Olympics.
Well, I hope you're not in that fan scoopie today and tomorrow.
Today, uh, matter of fact, I told the driver, he was on his own this morning, and he's four years older than I am.
Oh.
Do you know Duane? You know Marcy Creed?
Yeah.
It's her, her dad.
Oh.
And Marcy now works for Jeff Iglesias. I told the county attorney, if she ever needed help, Marcy's there. Never heard?
Barely, kind of so.
Good, good attorney.
Okay.
She helped me get the museum back.
Okay.
One of those people that doesn't have to worry about what's right and wrong, when I told her the situation, she goes, you've got to be kidding me, I go, no, I'm not.
So Tom, what is it that we can help you with on the big national cornhouse theme? I mean, that, that's huge, that's going to, the corn shutting, the corn shutting.
Well, I think, uh.
They want to shut the road down.
I think, uh, Bill. No, no, um, Christensen.
Right. Um, Dan.
No.
I'm seeing, it's not same Sunday.
Anyway, they just, they're typical farmers, they need to get off their butt and get a meeting and get a plan.
Yeah.
It's real late in the year, it's late in October.
Yeah, it's October twenty something.
Still doesn't.
Nineteenth?
Jeff, Jeff.
Jeff Christensen?
His dad worked for Montgomery County for years.
Oh, he was clear down on the highway too.
Anyway. Yeah, they just need to get Billy and him and Mayberry probably, and I'll come, uh, and make a plan. I don't know if the, the reason it's late is they have to wait for all the states. Six states, is that right?
Yeah. They all got to have their own.
And then they can have the national, so it's, it's going to be a big deal for the museum, I think they're nuts, that's what they want to do.
They, they have it for the next three years, right?
Yep. The court picking guy loves it. You see, Amanda had it for twenty years, and they got tired of it.
Well, I hope you're going to charge for this, right?
I, I don't know, I can't tell you. I hope Glenn's bathroom's filled up.
Um.
I imagine we'll have to do.
Water potties.
Kai Bo thing, yeah.
I bet you do. Well, let us know what we.
Well, don't tread down the mute.
October nineteenth.
There you go, it's, it's late.
Don't tread down the, the pit corner.
Well, and, and so then they plant beans, and I'm going, what the hell's going on? So Billy goes, well, it was our, it was our bean year, and we didn't know about this deal, so we're gonna, that's why they planted vessels straight east and west, right across the road, Charlie doesn't care, you know? So they're going to pick lanes, and they'll be walking back and forth across the old highway, there'll be a lot of traffic. The thing that terrorized me is when they told me that they were going to have these two eighty old guys on tractors with farm wagons hauling people from the school across New Thirty Four, and I go, no, you're not, no. No, well, do you think we could put up a temporary stoplight? No, I really don't think that would be wise. So that's the issue, is I think if they cut the beans, they can park a lot of people.
Sure.
Out there, and I'm sure some of vessels will be harvested.
That would make sense.
Curve around there, that could be pretty crazy.
Oh my God, Tom, how would you put these people on a wagon and get across Thirty Four?
They did that two years ago and nobody knew it, when they first had the state contest. And I kept seeing this, uh, well, it's the guy with the Ford tractors, you know him from over here. Paints them all up so nice, got a boy.
Yeah.
Little short guy. He was on an ace, D seventeen with a eight by ten wagon box with steps on the back. And they were parking him at the school, and he was driving him across the highway.
Tom Copperstone, brother one.
That's who it was. No, it's the other guy with the Ford tractor. Copperstone's all over. Anyway, I just, I looked at Billy and I said, are you, you've lost your mind? If that guy is in a car wreck, none of you are going to have enough money. I'm glad I'm not on the board of directors anymore. It scared me to death. Well, I don't think anything will happen, it's one of those, well. They just need somebody to help them organize and say, like, with your thing down here, the DOT or the, the county engineer needs to say, if we're going to close this road, this is what we have to do.
Right, right.
See, you got Three Hundred Ninetieth and Four Hundredth going a mile to the new highway.
Oh my God.
Which, you know, is an access if they're coming out of Emerson and they're trying to get to the new highway, which is eventually where the old highway is, but crossing the new highways and closing.
You won't have to worry about the bridge area because it'll still be tore up and won't be open anyway.
Well, you know what, people.
Which one?
Great south of it. Well, anybody coming from the south, where that hill?
Three Hundred Ninetieth is the overpass. Oh, you're thinking of the little bridge come from North Grove. I close that, yeah, yeah.
I think it'll be closed anyway.
For the railroad, you mean?
No, well, we're, we're supposed to put a new bridge in there.
No bridge there. Oh, there is a bridge. No, that's the one south of me, on three, on Four Hundred, Three Ninetieth.
Four Hundred Street. Yeah, Four Hundred Street.
Yeah, that's south of me.
That one will be closed.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's nobody lives down there anyway, Smith, but they'll go around. Lewis's.
Well, you know, they call Thirty Four Interstate Thirty Four anymore, because cars just fly on that.
Montgomery County's making money. They sit down there at the Indian Creek Bridge, and when you top that hill, you better be going fifty five, and I, I'm all for that. I've traveled that back and forth between those farms ten times a day. Yep, they're making bank.
Okay. That's good to know.
Cause I'm coming the other way, and if I was late for choir practice, I'd just let her eat going down Hundred Fifty Nine, you know, I've gone across that bridge ninety mile an hour. It's a natural speed zone.
It is.
I don't do that. I don't scoop way past them.
Oh, Thomas.
You guys are just flooded with new pickups, with accusations, with acquisitions, driveways. Your swimming pool guy wants his own pickup, I mean, this is a chance to do something else. That's the biggest point. And I know you talk to a lot of farmers, Richard, Lonnie, I know you see a lot of safety, this is not only agricultural. They go right, that pipeline's going right through a town, Shelby County, right smack through the middle of it, it's five hundred, no, it's a hundred and fifty feet west of Hy-Vee in Shenandoah.
A block away from Harlan School.
Yeah.
Block.
It's fifty feet from.
Marty Mager's house, isn't it?
Yeah, it's fifty feet from, uh, Merrill Sloan's house. Because he's up, because, but because he's on the other side of the property line, they don't notify. He has no voice, nothing. Yeah, it's, it's nuts.
It's nuts.
I think I told you when the environmental studies came through, these guys from Alaska told me, they laughed. Said, this is the craziest thing we've ever done, said, normally a pipeline, they do pipelines in Texas and Oklahoma, gas and oil. They contacted us, we do the environmental study in an area that's ten miles wide. And we tell them, this is the route you should follow. This guy, as an engineer draw a line across Iowa, contacts him and says, make this work. We can't do, we don't work that way. He just laughed when he was down, he said, you don't have to worry, it's not going to go through here. And then the Bieber chased him down the creek, so. Pretty well, pretty well.
Sure did right.
Well, I'll let you go, thank you, Dylan.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, very much. I'll give you a hat.
I got her, Billy. You see the top of my head, I don't go out without it. I don't have what you got.
Me and Lonnie got it.
Get out of here.
I'll draft up a, a year resolution of this, I'm going to exclude, obviously that's a resolution in the brief. Uh, this top portion year that says, um, to act and then demand a greater thing, cause the county alibi is something to the effect of objecting to the use of Iowa, the Iowa Utility Board's authority to enact eminent domain authority within Iowa counties. Right, as a general statement of we are opposed to this, because obviously we're not, I'm standing to say Mills, but no, I don't like this going through random counties and objecting to this.
Why don't they have Jamie to say in Mills County?
Well, is the pipeline actually supposed to cut through Mills County?
No, not yet. They don't want to...
Or is that actually continually part of the plan now or...
Right now, I don't think so.
I include that language if you want, but that being said, it is, it's not actually part of a plan like, this is going to go through Mills County by this standing portion.
A protection, that's not...
No, they don't want to dig in Mills County?
I know, but I thought that they were, it was a little bit costly there.
Yeah.
I, I include just Mills County in that part instead of objecting to the use in Iowa counties. I can, I can make it say Mills County. I can make it say we're like, obviously within boundaries of law, so I can say Mills.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Mike, are your mazes coming?
No, I don't.
And what is it that he's wanting?
He wants a, a five to 10 minute turnaround, a request. Then it was 24 hours, we had 10 to 20 minutes to do it, so.
Which we have more control. Yes, you do.
The information he's requesting is protected by attorney client privilege.
Except for one of them.
Except for one, which he can get within 10 to 20.
Correct.
But the specifics are attorney client privilege and we have no rights to... All correct requests of, 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 you manufacture or create documents, it's just, it's a vehicle to get documents that are available. So you have not an obligation to create a document. Additionally, it's protected by attorney client privilege. It'd be no different if someone was like, we can't compel that attorney to hand that over and want to compel a doctor to give someone medical records.
Right. Somebody comes up, tells a fit again, you turn it over to these guys.
All the stuff for him, then show up, so.
I'm trying to look into it. Okay.
Are we done here?
Yeah.
We're done.
Oh, yeah. I would make a motion to adjourn.
My seconded.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting at, uh, 9:50. All in favor?
Aye.